Good afternoon and welcome to the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Board of Education Special Call Board Meeting for July 1st, 2021. My name is Shay Woodbury, Chair of the Board, and I would like to officially call our meeting to order. As is, we do have a quorum. We're missing only one board member, which is our Vice Chair, Lyda Calvert-Hayes. And I think maybe Ms. Mott, senior board member Mott, senior wanted to have...
Yeah. I just wanted to mention that my friend and our fellow colleague, Lyda Calvert-Hayes, really regrets not being able to be here today. She is away on a long-planned family vacation, and she'd made those plans before any of these special-call meetings were scheduled. So, on behalf of my friend Lyda, apologies for not being here.
And I would just add additionally that Lyda Calvert-Hayes, I do recall when this meeting was decided upon, not planned, but decided upon, she was very clear with this board that she could not be in attendance and would not have access because technically our year ends the fourth Tuesday of June. So this is a special-call meeting after what our regular-scheduled year of meetings looked like. So we ask that the community understand that we all are working very hard in trying to move the work of the district forward. But moving along to our agenda review, I need to adjust the agenda to add a closed-session item to go into discussion regarding some personnel issues. So can I get a motion to amend the agenda?
Second.
Then no further question or discussion. Let it be known by aye for approval.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. The next item on our agenda is the public comment on agenda items. And before we go into the public comments, I just want to share, I hope on behalf of this board, definitely for myself, just want to recognize that we see students and families in our auditorium, and although all of you may not speak or may not be given, you know, the total three minutes of allotted time because we have so many people here to speak, that we recognize the presence probably most likely from any of the students at Reynolds or from Parkland or Winston-Salem Prep, because we know that these schools have issues with their outside facilities that don't meet, to some, and in our opinion, basic district standards. And this board is definitely committed to making sure that all schools have access to the facilities that they need and meet our basic standards. And I think that this board would like to see ideally every school, since we only have three schools that do not have a stadium, but every school have a stadium in its backyard. And I hope that this board will continue to look forward towards, you know, that goal since that's the, that's the, you know, I think the standard that Winston-Salem Forsyth County schools have. So I just wanted to open with that and definitely recognize the students and their families and applaud the students especially for having a courageous and brave heart to come and speak your peace and mind around this issue. And again, as I transition into the disclaim around public comments at this time, just know that because so many of you are here, you will be limited to one minute instead of three minutes. However, you are free to email, call us, and communicate in different ways. This is just one way that you can speak to the board in regards to any concerns that you have. So at this time for public comments, on agenda items only, so you have to, of course, make your comments based on the items we have for our agenda today. I will ask you to come to our podium, and I will ask you to, you know, think in the way of being, you know, kind and courteous in your comments, and know that although we will not reply to any questions or comments as a board, as you speak just solely to myself as the chair, we do have staff here that may be able to answer some questions after you make your comments. Lastly, I would just let you know that we do not talk about any sensitive or private student or personnel issues during any parts of our public comments. So keep that in mind too. And so if you, I'll say this as the first person, Madison Massey, if you'll start to come up, as you approach that one-minute time, you know, I will definitely be very kind and courteous to ask you to kind of wrap up with your last sentence or statement, and we'll do this to the best of our ability to make sure that everybody at least has an opportunity to speak. So, thank you, Madison.
Hello, everyone. I am Madison Massey, a senior at Reynolds High School. I'm a current member of cheerleading team while also participating in Crosby Scholars, Black Achievers. We are important. We matter. We are Reynolds High School. RJ Reynolds has done their best to maintain the football stadium, which has been shared with Parkland High School for years now. Being that majority of high schools in Winston-Salem have their own stadium, the RJ Reynolds students are calling for a change. This is an equity issue. For years, students, athletes, and fans are put at a risk of traveling to and from the stadium. The risk of car accidents will continue to increase if changes are not made. School spirit and participation will never be 100% when half of the school students has no transportation. Stripping our students from our Friday night football games experience are not an option. Ownership is so important in a school like Reynolds. We have a code for history, a legacy, and no stadium to call our own. Thank you for your time, and I hope you hear how important this need is to us.
Thank you, Madison. Next, we have Mr. Al Jabbar.
Board Chair Woodbury and Superintendent McManus and board members, I'm really ashamed to stand here in 2021. And we got our kids here at Reynolds and Parkland and, what's it say, the Prep, that don't have the same advantages that other schools have in terms of stadiums. We find monies to do so many other things, but these kids deserve the same thing that kids at West, the kids at Reagan, the kids at Tabor, all the other schools that have stadiums on their campus. It is so important, and I think about the kids, I actually be an AAU coach and had to run kids because parents couldn't bring their kids to practice. And, you know, sometimes it becomes a major issue because some kids get left out for that same reason, that they are not able to get to practice. So my prayer is that we won't be discussing this in the next school board after you guys, that we're still talking about the same thing dealing with our children. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jabbar. Next, we have Frankie Petrie.
Okay, so we're just coming through this pandemic, and the state and the country still working through a little bit of a recession. It's not a time to be spending a lot of extra money, in my opinion. We need to kind of watch our monies. I also would wonder, did we investigate using Bowman Gray Stadium? It's owned by the city of Winston-Salem. It just underwent a $9 million renovation. It's great. Winston-Salem State uses it back 1956 through 68. Wake Forest University used it. And, I'm into many a game there. Winston-Salem State still uses it. We could partner with the city of Winston-Salem. They could shuttle people just like they are shuttling from downtown parking lots to the Dash at a stadium. That is a win-win, and we could partner with the city of Winston-Salem, table this for a few years, see what other renovations need to be done, get some playground equipment on elementary schools. Those kids need it desperately.
Thank you. Next, we have Wanda Grubbs.
Is it like on me? Um, I think it's just like really unfair that there are multiple times during the lacrosse season where we had to drive 45 minutes to Old Davie Stadium just to practice, when all these other schools have the ability just to walk outside their front door and go and practice. And just like our games are 15 minutes away, there's, I play football and lacrosse, and there's never been a game I've went to where like the home, where the, our home game wasn't farther away than our own away game, which is just unfair for all kids. And, I don't know what else to say.
You did a great job. Thank you. Next, we have Henry Hubbard.
Hi, I'm a rising senior at Reynolds. There have been multiple occasions where we just haven't had kids at practice just because they haven't had a ride, or we haven't had kids who just haven't been able to come. And it's just like been very hard to progress as a team, and I think that having a stadium at Reynolds would really help bring us together as a team. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Kristi Ryback and...
It's just me.
It's just, okay.
Hi, my name is Kristi Ryback. I am an alumni at Reynolds High School in class of 2013. I teach there, and I'm also the varsity cheer coach. This has been up for discussion before I even graduated from Reynolds. So this has been a long time coming. I fully support this. I know our cheerleaders fully support this. It is absolutely impossible to have a home-field advantage when you do not have a home field. That's all I have to say about it.
Thank you. Next, we have Simon Fagdele. You can come and pronounce your name correctly. It's kind of hard to, I think, read the letters.
Good afternoon, board members. My name is Simon Fagdele. I'm a rising senior at Reynolds High School. My family immigrated to the U.S., actually seven years, almost to the date, and I've been a member of the Reynolds Football Team and Track and Field Team for two years now. As a freshman, I played lacrosse and also unable to keep it up because I had no right to games, I had no right to practice, and it was really unfortunate. Haynes Park right now is a part because not a lot of people get to use it because there's constantly conflict with both athletes and students. And I love Reynolds, I love my teammates, I love the students, and I really want to see it get better for the next generation. Please vote yes for the...
Thank you, and I apologize for mispronouncing your name too. Next, we have Mr. Alan Daniel.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
RJ Reynolds High School has a stadium. Deaton Thompson Stadium was built in 1989 specifically for Reynolds and Parkland. It is five miles from the high school. For all the reasons that have been enumerated, I believe the school district should provide activity bus transportation for every Reynolds athlete to any remote practice or game facility. Deaton Thompson is scheduled to be rebuilt in 2024. It has the capacity to seat every student and both parents for Reynolds athletic events. On the other hand, there are elementary schools in this district that do not have age-appropriate playground equipment for their students. I was stunned to learn that while every high school is built to include a football stadium, playground equipment is not a part of the package when a district, when the district builds a new elementary school. It is up to the PTA or private fundraisers to raise money. We all know the difference between fundraising at Clemmons Elementary and Ashley Elementary. In closing, I would like to request that Ms. Crowley be required to abstain from voting on this measure due to climate collective interest. Thank you.
Next, we have Stephanie Pretty.
In 2016, the voters in the community voted for bond referendum that to this day has not completely been done. Ashley School still has raw sewage and mold, but yet let's take on a new project of building a brand-new stadium at a school that is two years shy of being a century old. Within five years, that school is going to need to be updated, which will then cost more money. Neither staff nor students should have to be subjected to the conditions currently at Ashley and some of the other schools. These parents and staff should be informed about all this and be allowed to transfer without prejudice. Parkland and Reynolds still have mold and asbestos even after a remodel, but yet a stadium takes the priority. Build Reynolds a $26 million stadium, but yet leave Parkland with a million-dollar upgrade to a decrepit stadium. Leave Winston-Salem Prep totally out. There's so much here with the have and have-nots. Where does equity begin and end? By voting for this, you're saying the schools need stadiums. I agree, but why are you not considering a stadium also at $26 million for Winston-Salem Prep, a stadium for Parkland at $26 million as well?
Thank you, Ms. Pretty. Next, we have Thomas Hunter.
My name is Thomas Hunter, and I'm a rising senior at RJ Reynolds. I participate in lacrosse, track, and football. During my time at RJ Reynolds, I've been told repeatedly that a home stadium is coming, and every time it looked like that dream was being realized, some things happened that pushed it back time and time again. Every senior class I've had the pleasure of playing alongside has vocalized their disappointment for the lack of a stadium to play in, and my senior class is no different. I've come to grasp with the realization that I will not get to play in a home stadium with a true home atmosphere during my time at Reynolds. My only hope is that in the future, student athletes at RJ Reynolds High School will have a true home stadium to play in. Please vote yes to fund the stadium. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Rashid Davis. Good afternoon.
My name is Rashid Davis. I just want to say that I think it's extremely unfortunate that us as a team at RJ Reynolds have to practice on a field that isn't really our field, run on a track that really isn't our track, and share it with public who is very disrespectful towards us, who doesn't respect our time as a team, and just really affects our learning time, our skills, our talent. And when we go to other meets, it doesn't allow us to grow as we want to, get the times that we want to, be as strong as we want to, and it just, it's just terrible. Thank you, yours.
Thank you. Next, we have Cheyenne Hoven.
My name is Cheyenne Holdren. I'm a rising junior at Reynolds, and I'm currently a part of the lacrosse team and the track team. I had a chance to make it all-conference and to states this year with discus, but despite that, I had several practices with verbal altercations with people who would not get out of our way to practice, therefore taking away my time that I'm devoting. It's like saying, oh, well, like you just have to get over it. And so having a stadium, saying yes to funding the stadium would give your students an opportunity to have time to practice. Our fields for lacrosse are 15 minutes away, and as someone who doesn't drive yet, I have to pay people gas money to go play a sport. And to me, that doesn't seem very fair at all. Thank you guys so much for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have James Stone.
Hello, I'm James Stone, a student at RJR High. I am an active member of both football as well as track and field, along with the theater program. With our school being a arts-based school, many students there have the resources to achieve arts-based careers. But some students who are not focused on those goals, who are focused around being athletics, don't have access to the stadiums indeed, such as our teams in dive, football, track, and cross. Well, like other schools, we don't have a private facility for some in Haynes Park. There's been altercations with parkgoers and athletes, which have come verbal and sometimes have altercated into other unfortunate events. There has been many years that's been going on saying that we would get a stadium. As a senior and a previous JV captain, I know I will be able to play in the stadium. I'm hoping that the JV, the I helped captain last year, will have the ability to play in the stadium. Thank you for your time, and please vote yes for the stadium.
Thank you. Next, we have Pat Crowley.
And I'd like to disclose that the speaker is my husband.
Thank you.
I agree with her.
I'm glad you do.
I have two kids at Reynolds and two college kids who used to attend Reynolds. I coached the football team, and I'm an assistant track coach. I sat on the William G. White YMCA board for four years, and I coached dozens of teams for the Y in Haynes Park. Because of the actions of Catherine Reynolds and the Haynes families and the city leadership 100 years ago, we have two beautiful classic schools and a great park and a great location. It's ironic how 100 years ago, those two great schools and one classic park were created through the cooperation of the private citizens and the local government, but today we're struggling to do the same thing for the kids, for these schools, and we keep coming up short. The athletic facilities at RJR are terrible. If you doubt me, I'll be happy to give you a tour. Please vote today to approve the funding. It's a chance for us to get us back on track. It's a great school, and these kids deserve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Troy Holmes.
My name is Troy Holmes, and I am a rising junior at RJ Reynolds. I play football and throw shot put and discus for the track team. I've been working hard to be great at both sports and hopefully make a living off of what I learned. I came here to Reynolds despite my family history at Tabor and other schools. By coming to Reynolds, I can make a legacy here, and this right here is a part of when I want to leave here at Reynolds. Please vote yes today. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Woody Clintert.
I question, first of all, whether we have the right to spend money for a stadium for a building. Looks to me like that should be something the county commission do when you talk about construction. And I think you, Ms. Crowley, should not vote on this issue because all these people who spoke for it are, have a vested interest in this. All the football players, lacrosse players, yeah, they're into it. I want to speak for the kids. Half of our kids in school, our system, for which you're responsible, as well as all of us, cannot read at grade level. I talked to one principal that took away five halftime assistance and gave them back one halftime. And this money could be spent for that, to help the kids learn to read. That's the fundamental issue at hand, I think. So please don't spend our tax money for this stadium.
Thank you. Next, we have Susan Teen.
Hi, my name is Susan Tag, and I'm a tax...
I'm sorry about that.
That's fine. Listen, everybody gets it wrong. But simply what I want to say is, besides being a tax-paying citizen or someone that's been involved in the schools in the 25, almost 26 years that I've lived in this county, I am a reading tutor. I have had two students I've successfully taught to read, but why was that necessary? We finally, as a state, have adopted using the science of reading. That means educators have to be educated on how to use that. We, as a county, have bought into the science of reading. And I just, you know, working with little kids who can't even tell you their alphabet, it makes it really hard for me. While I understand why these kids want to have a stadium, it makes it really hard for me to see my dollars go to a stadium rather than teaching our children how to read.
Thank you. Next, we have Frank Dotson.
Hi, I'm Frank Johnson, Reynolds class of 83, resident of the West End since '93 and an active member of the West End Association. I would like to speak in favor of the stadium. Reynolds High School just graduated its 99th class. In August, Reynolds will begin its 100th academic year. The school building and auditorium will each turn 100 over the next two years. Later this month, there is an alumni barbecue planned to kick off these years of Jubilee, so it's imperative that the school board act now, as this will be an opportune time to raise more funds for the stadium and the school. Please don't close this window of opportunity. We need a commitment, we're looking for a commitment from you, and $2 million could be seen as an effective matching gift incentive. For years, I coordinated the Reynolds reunions, and I couldn't get alumni to come back to the football game because they didn't know where the stadium was. We need alumni at our football games, not just the parents. We need alumni there because we've got a great alumni base, and we're raising a lot of money right now, and it's just not as good as it needs to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Brett Fisher.
My name is Brett Fisher, and I'm the athletic director at Reynolds. I came today to speak on a stadium issue that involves me on my day-to-day job. I've assumed people truly understood the disadvantages of Reynolds, but it's obvious that people still don't. Reynolds is the most diverse school in the system, and according to Public School Review, is the top 10% diverse schools in North Carolina. 63% of our student population is minority, 47% are on free and reduced lunch, and out of 1,700 students currently enrolled at Reynolds, 500 of them come from Winston-Salem's Voting District 1. Our school has the general makeup of Forsyth County more than any other school, but what we have is a safety issue. There's any evening, we could have three events at three different locations. It's impossible for my trainers and myself to cover all these events for our students. Even this spring, we were playing home games at two locations inside Davie County. So I'll finish on this point. You heard from Daryl Walker the other evening, this has been going on for decades. It was approved by the school board in 2012 to move forward. I ask now that you help the students at Reynolds High School, and please vote in favor of funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Hayden Stotter. Maybe Stotter. Hayden Stotter.
My name is Hayden Stotter. I'm a rising senior here at Reynolds High School. For years, I've been waiting for the stadium to be built. I've always imagined that I could walk down the hill and go into my stadium, but we haven't had one. And I feel like for the younger generations, that is something they truly deserve. By having one, we eliminate the problem of children needing transportation, and like it gives us our school pride back. We can't decorate Deaton Thompson because it isn't solely ours. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Dr. Leslie Alexander.
Cheerwood Berry, school board, Superintendent McManus, thanks so much for letting me speak a little bit. Today is my first official day, no longer as principal of Reynolds High School. So this is not a, this is a happy, sad day for me, mostly sad right now. I just wanted to say, the pandemic has taught me so much about Reynolds High School. Our staff is amazing. I have seen teachers collaborate together, math teachers call social studies teachers to figure out how to track down a kid. I've seen my secretary, the guidance clerk, calling every number in power school to try to locate numbers for kids. I've seen athletic coaches pick up student athletes not to take to practice, but to take to their kitchen table to do homework. These people are amazing. And if they're here today telling you they need this stadium, they need the stadium. I hope that as principal, that my voice will matter. I can't tell you who the next principal's going to be. I can't tell you if it's a man or a woman, black, white, in the district, out of the district, but I can tell you this, they need every tool in their tool belt to help with these kids. And this stadium is an important tool for that person. Please help him or her to be successful in this next job. Reynolds is such an amazing place. Please make a commitment to these students today.
Thank you. Next, we have Loretta Wilson.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name's Loretta Kelly Wilson. I've been a resident of the West End since 1980, mother of two, alumna of Reynolds. Everybody agrees that Reynolds should have a wonderful stadium, and it should be close, but I don't know how many of you live in the West End and have been experiencing what we have with the traffic and the congestion, the parking. At the top of Brookstown Avenue where I live, they're building a new 250-unit apartment building. They're building another one downtown. The link is there. This is going to create tremendous congestion and, I think inevitably, some accidents. I wonder if the Dash Stadium has been considered, since a baseball stadium is actually bigger in a square-foot area than is needed for... in a square foot area than is needed for a football stadium? And I wonder if alternative locations, including South Marshall Street and other walkable areas, have been considered? And I think also, I agree with the previous speakers, that $2 million is a lot of money to squander on a facility that will be used only temporarily by some kids in a sport that causes many, many head injuries.
Thank you, Ms.
Thank you.
Listen. Next we have Elizabeth Coy, Coy, you? Elizabeth Coy. Thank you.
Hello, yes, I'm Elizabeth Coy, although most of you probably know me as Bibi. Hello and thank you for this time today. I, as you know, the pandemic has revealed inequities in our district and revealed them to be more stark than we've ever known before. There's no shortage of pressing issues that need to be addressed in children with pressing needs. We depend on your leadership to prioritize and triage this unusual time and the needs and the monies that must meet them. To be clear, equity-driven solutions seek to level a playing field, often through unequal distribution of resources. Such measures are often countered by demands of equality-driven solution, equal distribution of resources. Equality-driven solutions favor the privilege because everybody rises in the same level and those inequities remain. I urge you to focus on the right playing field, level the inequities in our district, focus on that playing field and be fair to all our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Hannah Goodman.
I'm Hannah Goodman, Reynolds class of 1984, parent of a Reynolds graduate and a current Reynolds student, and my dad played football at Reynolds in 1955. And I'd just like to say to all the kids here today, my daughter's classmates, that this whole board here is working to get y'all a stadium. Everybody's working together. We all want Reynolds to have a stadium. And your principal and your football coach and everybody up here is doing their best to help you, but the stadium we're voting on today is probably not the best solution. There's stuff across the street at Crossnor, former children's home, that might be a possibility that's opened up. Also, who here went to Wiley? I went to Wiley. My kids went to Wiley. Wiley, if you go and you look at the land in front of Wiley, Wiley's lost its side yard and they're getting ready to lose their front yard and this is supposed to be for Wiley too. So consider, we're considering other options and the thing we're voting on today might not be the best solution, but y'all will get your stadium as soon as possible.
Thank you, Ms. Goodman. I think we have one online person? No? Okay. So that is our public comment section. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is discussion items, which we do not have any tonight. We do have three action items. The first action item is to consider approval of the additional budget transfers.
So moved.
Second.
Any question or discussion? All in favor? Be opposed? Motion passes. The next item is to consider approval of the lease of the new print shop equipment.
So moved.
Second.
Any question or discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimous vote there. The last action item is to consider approval of potential funding for the athletic facility improvements at Parkland High School and Reynolds High School. And what I'll ask before we vote is if the Buildings and Grounds Committee Chair can remind us what the motion actually was specifically right there.
Be happy to, Chair Woodbury. So when we met on Tuesday, the Building and Grounds Committee voted to bring this motion to the full board and that was to allocate $2 million to Reynolds and $1 million to Parkland and those funds would come from the current fund balance. So I will make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any question or discussion?
Yes, I had a question for Ms. Gillis. I know we discussed at the meeting on Tuesday, the fund balance.
Yes, ma'am.
And I don't remember that we discussed that we had made a commitment to spend, I think, up to $1 million for a facilities review. Is that correct? Did we have that vote where we were going to?
I'm not sure if there was, if that era was approved.
I think, I think, Mr. Walker, can you remind?
Was that approved?
I believe that we, well, Daryl comes up, I believe that that happened at Building and Grounds and I believe we gave Mr. Walker the direction to get the RFP together. I don't know that we allocated any money yet.
That is correct.
Okay. So that was, and I, I just want to make sure that we had talked about up to $1 million of our fund balance for a facilities review across the district. Is that right?
I believe, oh, it's going to be funny.
All right. I just wanted to make sure that that was a commitment that the board hadn't, or we had really said, please go forward with it and that that would review our facilities across the district. Right?
Andrea.
Yes, ma'am.
And do you know if there are any other particular items? I know we discussed on Tuesday that we might need to pay for a technology upgrade.
Well, we'll definitely need $2 million for technology upgrade, potentially more if the state budget does not come through.
Okay. So I'm just trying to make sure that we are thinking about the fund balance, what other commitments we may indeed have for that money. So $2 million to possibly $4 million.
Four and a half.
So potentially $4.5 million for a technology upgrade.
And that's over two years, right?
Yes.
Right, right. So, right, but I'm trying to discern what commitments or what things we actually may have in front of us for that fund balance. And I remembered the facilities and I'm just asking, do you know of any other things that might potentially?
I don't know of any definite decisions that have been made to spend fund balance other than the facilities plan and the potential that I've discussed with the board of, you know, the $2 million for the technology upgrade as well, you know, as well as the potential of going to $4.5 million if the state budget does not come through. But other than that, there are no.
So that would be $5.5 million?
Five and a half million, yeah.
And our current fund balance is?
6.9 right now. Until we, you know, until the audit comes out and it's probably going to go up maybe a couple million more once we get through the audit.
But, but again, we're hoping for that. We don't know we have that.
Right. Until the audit's done, we don't know for sure.
Okay. So of our fund balance, about 2/3 of it sounds like we potentially need to spend.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Gillis, I have two questions for you real quick. As Chair of Finance, have we seen a pattern of using the fund balance to pay for construction in the past? I know you're fairly new here, but have you seen evidence of that?
Not to my recollection. I can ask Daryl, but no, yes, no. I mean, we have used the fund balance in the past before to buy other capital items such as vehicles, but not construction.
And are you comfortable arguing this in front of the county commissioners as a fair expense for the fund balance?
I mean, if I'm honest, I wouldn't be comfortable because it would deplete the fund balance that we have and when I first arrived here, it was around $2 million and we're trying to get it built back up, but I mean, it's the will of the board to do what you want to do with the fund balance.
Thank you very much.
Before you go, sorry. So I think just for, because we have some attendees that may not be aware of some of the phrases that we're using. So our fund balance is essentially our savings. That's correct?
It's like the savings account, yes. What we don't spend of our county funds, of our local funds, our current expense funds roll to fund balance at the end of the year.
Right. And so right now, what we have in savings is 6.9 million dollars.
Yes.
How much money per year do we have in our budget? Do we budget for?
Our local current expense fund is probably around 130, 140 million.
130, 140 million. And we have 6.9 million in savings. So do you foresee, because I, when I think about savings, the concern is that, you know, you would want to be really cautious about how you use that, right?
Yes.
And that if we are, if we use the fund balance and we deplete it back to where it was when you first got here and then we have some sort of emergency, then that puts us in a precarious position. Would that be correct?
Yes.
Okay. So have you, or maybe this would be more, a more appropriate question for the superintendent? Because I think that, you know, we, I'll be, I'll be honest. A week ago, I, I did not know that we would be here in this, in this meeting today. So I know that I, I'd like to know if you have been able to kind of get together with staff to, to develop some sort of recommendation at this point or if you would require more time.
So, so we've been talking, actually even up right before this meeting. So this meeting was planned late and there has been, there have been many documents being, going back and forth and reading. We've been talking about our finances and there could be other funds we don't even know about right now until we can dig in. We've, we have found $500,000 right now in savings and construction. So the money that should be used for the stadium, we believe should come out of construction or capital outlay dollars, dollars that are meant for these kinds of projects. And so we really want to have, I mean, in an ideal world, we would be able to dig a little bit deeper because even right before this conversation, when we walked in, we were talking about other ways we could look for the money for the schools, the schools and, and all of the schools that we've been discussing that have inadequate facilities for their athletic programs. So yeah, so to answer your question, we would, we are on the path of trying to find more dollars. If we were to do that, that would not come out of fund balance, but that would come out of the funds that are, really should be used for facilities and for facility improvements and, and yes.
So the, the other question I had, and Andrea, you can, I think you can go back. I don't, I won't have any more questions for you. Thank you. So some of the students were talking about their, their needs with facilities beyond sort of the stadium and I think that the, I don't think, and again, I've said this now three times, there's not a single, I don't think there's a single person up here who doesn't believe that Reynolds needs a stadium, but I think that there seem to be, I'm sorry, was?
So I'll ask for, I'll ask for some order right now, but I think Mr. Bohannon is speaking and as soon as he finishes, then I definitely will recognize each board member. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I, I think that, would you talk a little bit about, because I think that if we, I think we will move and get to a place where we'll be able to commit some funds from capital outlay, but what, are we going to continue to, to look at alternative means to sort of help with some other facilities? Because it sounds like the whole, like we have to kind of look at Haynes Park because that's not a, it's, it's been the way it is, you know, for a really long time and it sounds like students are struggling, not just, you know, I don't think the stadium will solve all of those issues. So do you think longer term, you'll be sort of looking kind of holistically? And I think the facility study will do some of that, but I, I think that it'd be good to hear the commitment from you.
So, so I will just say, and this is, this is kind of not the easiest answer, but I will say that as I'm looking at things in our system and how much money we get every two years and how much money we get on top of that and, and what we're allocating funds to, when I hear things like, you know, schools without certain things, like we are addressing those things. Just the other day, you know, I found out about a school that didn't have a basic playground and we are actually making sure that happens. And so they had one, it just wasn't what, what it really needs to be. The reason I bring that up is because that type of analysis is what we're doing right now. When it comes to our, our schools that don't have access to, to a, a home stadium, and again, a home stadium satisfies all athletic programs and more, band, practice, cheerleading practice. I spent my entire life in a stadium, my entire life. My dad was a football coach for 42 years. Sent my entire life in a, in a, in a stadium on Friday nights, up until he passed four years ago, but I will tell you, that was very important and it still is important to students. So what I'm telling you, and I don't even know what you asked now because I'm talking too much, but I will just tell you that we want to be able to, we will be able to uncover funds so that Parkland has an adequate facility to practice. And again, you know, and I, and I want to get out, because one of the things I love hearing from is our students and honestly, I love feedback from everybody, but it's really no better than coming from our kids. That's who I actually am here to serve. And so basically, Parkland students deserve a practice field on their campus that they don't have to drive to. Now, I understand right now, Dean Thompson is, would be the field that is renovated and becomes their own and they can celebrate it, but I can promise you, I'm also going to go, I've been told we can't build a stadium on that campus, but if we can, we're doing it and also at Prep. So in other words, the three schools that don't have all of the facilities that a high school experience should have, the elementary schools that don't have the facilities that an elementary student should have, the middle schools that don't have it, that is up to us to provide it. We have funds to do that. So I say that and then I also want to say, luckily, we are so fortunate right now that we have 215 million coming in to address the, the gaps, the, the gaps that, that exist, the racial achievement gaps that exist and other gaps where kids are less than proficient in reading. 100 million in the next three years is going to fit, to, to adjust. We, we will get our 90 by 25 goal in third grade and we've got the funds to do that. So as I'm thinking of facility dollars, I'm not thinking of jumping into any other dollar that would impact literacy or anything like that. Now, I know that was very long-winded, so Mr. Bohannon, can you, Board Member Bohannon, can you remind me if, did I answer your question or do I need to stick to the, to the question?
No. The point, the point of the question was to hear from you about what your, what your strategy is.
Yes.
Because at the end of the day, you are the person that is responsible for the day-to-day operations of the district. So I wanted to provide you with that opportunity.
Yeah. And I will say, so again, five minutes before I walked up here, I'm talking to Mr. Walker. Yesterday, I was talking to Ms. Gillis and we have not done a deep dive into every possible bucket that we can, again, because of, of timing, to be honest with you, I'll just tell you. And so talking a few minutes ago, there were other ideas that were coming to the forefront that are intended for purposes like this. And so basically, I, I believe we can do the projects and, and I will also say this, the thing about the project with the stadium is that the district is, it's actually a, a business proposition because the district is not covering the entire, the whole expense. I mean, a stadium, number one, the stadiums are not, they're not in the 20 million, they're about six, Daryl, $6 million for this stadium? Four, three, four, three to six million? Six and a half million. So the funds, what, what folks are asking for is a commitment and no one ever said what the amount was, but what they did say is that there's also money that would be coming to the district, which really hasn't happened in any other stadium, as far as I know. I, I don't have all the history and I apologize for that, but as far as I know, no other school has had any community members that have said, or parents that have said, we're going to, we're going to contribute some of those dollars. And so really, to build a stadium for $2 million or, I know a proposal the other night was $1 million, I'm not sure we would ever have that opportunity. Districts don't get that opportunity. So I'm just saying, you know, yes, we will continue to find those dollars. We want to commit to these three schools and, and I know Prep was not discussed the other night, but Prep needs it as well, so that there, all three of those school students can play on their campus and not have to, and, and have their, you know, you know, athle, I will just say this, athletics and extracurriculars, arts are so important for, so anyone to actually, you know, think that those things are not equally important, I will tell you, and I, and I just have to make this point and then I'll be quiet because I think it's really important, is, you know, you don't get, you know, after 42 years of football and when you have thousands of folks show up to a funeral to actually talk about the impact a coach has had on them and that they wouldn't be where they are today without that, what I'm telling you that that is just as important. It is. And so I'm committed. I am committed right now to make sure that our students across this district have the facilities they need and deserve, whether that be athletics, whether that be in classroom, whether that be their playgrounds. And that is our responsibility as the school district. And so those are my remarks. We will find funds to support this.
Board Member Parker, I think maybe Board Member Crawley had her hand up before you did.
I just want to clarify patient about the practice field. So it's my understanding that the stadium at RJR, if it's on their, you know, on campus, that they would use it for practice fields. Can somebody answer how many regulation practice fields they currently have at their disposable, disposal on campus that kids can walk out of the classroom and they have a practice field to use? Mr. Coach Fisher, would you be able to address that?
Yeah.
Because I, I, from the email I got, I understood that Parkland has practice fields for their teams, and Winston-Salem Prep sounded kind of sketchy. Um, what is, what's the state of the Reynolds High School practice field situation?
Uh, at, at this point, we have zero fields that are regulation size. Um, the practice field, the, the Home Field Advantage, uh, built for the school system a couple of years ago, um, it is on our campus, um, but the way that we align it, it's pretty much a half field, um, just because of the creek in the road. So, so as of right now, the, the plan would be if, if we do get, um, support from the school system and we're able to build a stadium, it would also be used as a regulation practice field for, for those field sports.
And where, where does boys, where's lacrosse practice? Boys lacrosse, girls lacrosse?
Boys lacrosse practices at South Fork Elementary. Girls lacrosse practices at Sherwood Forest Elementary. And boys soccer practices at Bolton Elementary. Um, the practice field that Home Field Advantage, uh, put in for us is currently used by field hockey in the fall, girls soccer in the spring.
Okay, where does, where does the football team practice?
The football team practices on, in Haynes Park on the baseball outfield, um, because they go in the fall and baseball's in the spring.
Wait, they're in the outfield of the baseball field? So what size is that? That's not a football field?
It depends on the layout. Uh, if you go from, uh, right field to center, it's about 60 yards. If you go from left field to center, it's about 45 yards.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we have, um, Board Member Parker, and then I'll get Board Member Bramer, and then Board Member Mott Singer.
Actually, I was gonna, um, ask or, or talk about some of the things that, that Ms. Crowley just talked about. I asked for that information yesterday, um, about where our teams practice. Because I do think that it is important that students are able to practice where they go to school. Because I do remember, um, that sometimes, and I think this is a big part of the 2.0 academic regulation, is that students should attend tutoring and are required to attend tutoring sessions, athletes and extracurricular, um, students are if they are falling below that 2.0. Um, it is difficult to do that and still go to practice if you cannot do that, um, onsite. So I think that, that to me is very important. It was very important when my children were in school that, that students do the academics first, and then they get to do the extracurriculars. That's hard to do if you're off, if you're off campus. Um, I asked for the information about all three schools for Winston-Salem Prep, for Parkland, and for Reynolds, and where they practiced. Winston-Salem Prep, and I think all board members should have received this information that we asked, that I asked for. Winston-Salem Prep has, um, facilities that all children can practice, um, there. Parkland does as well. Now, Parkland has some issues because they need a fence to, um, enclose, um, some of their fields and things so that balls don't go in the wrong places and all that. But, but, and so Parkland does need some money to, uh, outfit their facilities so that their practice areas are safe and they are, um, adequate. Reynolds has quite a few, um, teams that have to go offsite. I do think it's important that we, in some way, um, provide a practice field. And I think that if they had a, a nice practice field, that they could probably shift things such that almost everybody could be onsite to practice. Because if you have an additional practice field, that, that frees up a practice field that's presently used for another team. I think that's very important. And that is, would be my wish, is that we would find funds to have an adequate practice field for Allen Reynolds High School, um, campus or there close enough, maybe where they have the proposed field, um, for the new stadium. Maybe, you know, you can, you could do that and then phase and do things. But I do think that would be my priority, is that we have something that's, that Reynolds students can walk outside when the bell rings, go to tutoring or go to practice onsite so they're not having to, to go elsewhere. I think it's a safety issue, and that would be my.
So they would get, they would have one regulation-sized practice field for the whole school? Because there's zero now on campus. So we're saying.
True, but I do believe.
So the idea behind the stadium would be due, you would use it for, for practice and games?
Maybe not necessarily at first, but I mean, I think it's, I think it's important that, that we start with adequate facilities to get all children practicing on campus. And if we can phase, if that's a phase project, then I think that, that works or whatever. But I do think that's very important, that we, we make that a priority, that we get enough practice fields for Reynolds for children to practice.
As we transition to Board Member, um, Bramer, I would ask that the audience hold their applause. I will say that, because this is officially designed as a business meeting, you know, we're kind of focused right now in trying to, um, figure out this major situation. Um, but we welcome you to stay afterwards and can applaud us if you would like, but, um, please just hold your applause so we can stay focused and get, you know, to the end of this meeting. Board Member Bramer.
I'm gonna try to make this as concise as possible and answer my questions all at once so that I don't keep talking randomly. First, I have a question for Deion. I would like to know what is defined that we were sworn to as a sound education?
Well, Ms. Bramer, under the statute, the board has a legal obligation to provide a sound, basic education for all students. That term is not defined in the statute. It's addressed in multiple cases over the course of the years, um, but it does not specifically address athletics, if that's your question.
Thank you. Um, I have a question for Ms. Gillis, I'm sorry again. And, um, I would just want to ask about the 500,000 savings. Is it guaranteed, or is this an estimate? And I'll need Daryl Walker, too, so you might as well go ahead and hock up.
I'll let Daryl answer that question.
Okay, thank you, that'd be great.
Yeah, as, as I mentioned the other night, um, we actually have about 1.5 in savings in our capital plans out of our 2/3 bond. Not, I think there was some construction mentioned, but we've allocated 900,000 towards an emergency roof repair at North. So we currently have around 500,000.
And is that guaranteed?
Solid in our savings for our capital projects, so 2/3, our 10-year plan, 2/3 projects.
Okay, so it's guaranteed? We will have that 500,000?
Yeah, we have that right now.
Okay. And are there any competing sports at the, I see a lot of on-campus sports for Parkland and Prep. Are they competing for territory on campus?
At Parkland and.
And Prep.
Um, I think, you know, their, their soccer football, I think, uses the same facility at Parkland, um, uh, which is their field inside their track there that they have. They do have a regulation-sized field there. Um, and we are, that, that would be part of the, the million dollars that we discussed, that we would kind of upgrade their surface, put some irrigation in and redo some fencing there, as well as some restroom facilities.
That would not separate, though, the fact that football and soccer may be practicing at exactly the same time?
Yeah, uh, yes, and, and that's the reason, one of the reasons why they want to put up light, so they could, one could go early or one could get late.
Okay, and, and that Reynolds going to different locations allows them to not compete on the same field?
Say that one more time.
So a lot of times when soccer and football practice, so they're not competing for the same space, they go to separate fields?
They would, i- i- if you're on campus, they're, uh, right now their teams practice off-campus.
Right.
So I would assume they would have to schedule, just like they do the Park now, they have to schedule the Park the same way.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, and my final, I have a concern, it's just a concern, this doesn't involve either one of you, thank you very much. Um, this is for the superintendent, we were given numbers. We've been talking about safety and equity of students traveling, and we've been talking about the diversity within RJR. But the numbers provided to us today show me that 64% of RJR is minority. At the same time, 89.5% at Parkland, 99% at Prep. And Prep was left off the table to face these same concerns and not be solved. If we're going to talk equity, then we need to be talk, talking about Prep and Parkland first, and Reynolds third.
So, um, so my team and I, as we've been meeting this year, have been discussing all three of those schools and what we were going to do for all three. I did, I, the motion made the other night was I did not bring a recommendation forward, if you remember, was that two nights ago? And so basically, as, uh, as Mr. Walker and I have been talking, we've actually been talking about all three, and what it would take, and I'm just going to say, this is going to be a level the playing field, literally, level the playing field, um, for all three of those schools and for their, uh, for their program. So yes, that, that is, has been in one, in our discussion. It just didn't come up the other night, again, because I didn't bring the recommendation forward. Thank you.
So I, I think that, um, Board Member Mott Singer, and then I'll get Board Member Kaplan, and then Board Member Crowley.
Yes, um, so when I first got elected to the school board in 2006, a bond had been passed that year as well, and the next time we were able to do a bond was many years later. Um, we did not get to repeat the bond as quickly as we had hoped, and unfortunately, it was quite a while. And a few members of this board were part of building a bond. And my experience is that the needs far surpass what we can actually ask our community to pay for. I guess my question was, and again, it goes back to the facilities review, which is really a comprehensive look at all of the data at all of our schools, to come up with a really clear, objective list, this is where the biggest gaps are. And my hope would be to take that information and use that information to build our next bond, which, from, at least the sounds I'm hearing, sounds like 2024 is a hopeful year for the next bond. My concern, and it's very, and I, I feel very strongly as a mother, is about following the rules. Now, for a wild-eyed lefty, people maybe don't see me that way, but I believe in following the rules. And I believe that when you say, here's the line, and people break in the line, that that doesn't give the message to our community that I would want us to give. And my experience on the board is that we've had a couple instances where groups really want to break in a line, and that sometimes that's actually been allowed to happen. And I don't think that that's a healthy thing for our district. So a great deal of my concern, because we built the Wiley Gym in the last bond, because the district stepped up and took on something that in the 2012 agreement was not going to be our responsibility, I believe that this concern about a stadium is another one of those bond projects. And I would agree with Ms. Parker's statement absolutely about, let's get an operational practice field, let's get the protections on Parkland, use those bond savings to, you know, create the things that are a step gap and look again. So is that not how a bond is put together? And isn't a bond for big projects?
Yeah, so I, I think a bond is definitely for big projects. I think if, if our district was going to, and I have, it's not part of the bond, and I wasn't here for all of those decisions, but I will say, so I think a bond is for big projects, and when you look at them, it's the building of schools. It's the building of the stadiums. I know there were projects on there, like, um, a couple stadiums, but these three projects would not, they're not, so, so again, we're not, if, if we're going to take it on in the bond, then we need to pay for the entire, like, if we were, if this is going to happen and we take it on the bond, then we need to not have communities paying for these things, and we need to pay for them with our own funds. Um, so if we go to a bond, if we wait on, if we were to wait on a bond, to answer your question, then our district needs to take on that expense. Because I don't think community should have to pay $4 million that they're willing to pay towards a $6 million stadium. Um, when it comes to Parkland and, um, and the other, I'm not sure why we would need to wait for a bond on fixing their practice fields like that, so yeah.
And again, I don't think.
But to your point, large projects, we've got a lot of other large projects also coming with the next bond, too. So yes, big projects.
But so my understanding is that big projects have done that, and that we have built schools, unfortunately, in the history of this district, often things like playgrounds and stadium lights and things that, um, really good practice fields. I know with Atkins that we had volunteers out there from the schools digging up rocks to clear up fields. So we have often not been able to provide at the level that, that people are now saying should be a minimum.
Yes.
Has not been something that this community has been able to afford. And so I came in as a new school board member 14 years ago, learning that some of the inadequacies I saw were not deliberate, um, withholding by prior boards, but turned out to be prior boards making the best decisions they could with limited resources. And so I look at the past, and I don't see people who deprive someone of something. I see people who tried very hard to do the best for their community that they knew how to do.
Yeah.
And I really get scared about trying to judge all of those decisions as if they should have done something else.
Yeah. I will say to respond to your, about the facility study, I do think a lot of other things will be uncovered that are not as out there as, um, athletic facilities. So in other words, we know now what schools have what. But I do think the facility study, as we think about the future bond, is going to be very helpful to figure out the other things.
See our classrooms.
Right.
I think next we have Board Member Kaplan, and then Board Member Crowley.
Um, well, I just want to thank the students that came forward and spoke today. Um, it's hard not to get emotional when I heard everyone speak. I actually was getting emotional. And I can speak, you know, I did before. I have experience because I've had five kids go through it. My oldest is 30, uh, she's, she's over 30, and she was hoping for a stadium. And so it's been, it's been a minute for these kids. Um, it was very emotional to hear some of the students say that they, they realize they're not going to be able to play on a stadium, that they're hoping that, uh, the future, um, the future students can, hopefully, uh, in the next couple of years. Um, I would, I would like to see it earlier than that. Um, I, it, I don't know what else we can say. We need to get these facilities for these kids. We need it for not only Reynolds, but we need it for Parkland, we need it for Prep. I think as a board, we should prioritize this. I think we need to figure out how to pay for it. And I realize that Reynolds has got a lot of parents that are trying to chip in, and they're trying to make this happen, and I respect that. And I think, um, I think we even have permits that are going to expire in November if we don't start moving forward. So I, uh, we definitely need a facilities audit, I, I get that. Um, but we also need to do something now. We need to put a commitment from this board for these, these stadiums, for this, for this need. And, um, I, you know, I, I want to ask Daryl, I know he said he's got 500,000 right now that he could put toward it. What about, um, how much are you foreseeing of savings coming up in the near future? I mean, what, what can we expect if we want to just keep contributing toward these, instead of just a one-time 500,000? What else can we expect in the near future?
I really would like to be able to.
Answer that.
Follow and see a big number, but, you know, the market has been so up and down, and, um, it's really a no. I, I, I don't think it's uncommon, uh, well, well, what's been interesting in this process is that our capital projects have received more savings than our bond project. Construction projects are just different. And so our capital projects around roofs and boilers and chillers and windows and things of that nature, kind of one-offs, uh, has been a lot more kind of competitive. So we've been able to recoup and, and, and gain some savings in some of those projects. I don't, I, I mean, I don't think this market can continue as is. Do I foresee, uh, future savings? Absolutely, I do. Can I give you a number? I, I would really be comfortable doing that, but I do feel comfortable knowing that we've been successful in the future in gaining some savings, uh, in our capital projects, and I don't think that will change.
And, and if we were to look at, you know, starting this and then maybe putting, you know, if we, if we're still lacking some funds for these three projects on the next bond, how many years would that be? you know, if we, if we're still lacking some funds for these three projects on the next bond, how many years would that be? I mean, you could say you vote on it, but then how many years after that? Because we're talking about a long, a long time, really, to fulfill this.
You would, you would be 24, you, you do have a plan in place, um, but those expire over time, and you may end up back at the table on a design function.
Yeah, it just keeps going.
You're, you're probably, once you have the bond, probably at least a couple of years out.
And, and this last bond, my understanding is that the Reynolds Stadium was on it, but it got scratched out? Why was it scratched out?
I was correct. That, uh, the Reynolds Stadium, as well as North Forsyth, was, and Deacon Thompson, Mount Tabor and Glen were all in there. Uh, Mount Tabor and Glen Stadium, there were structural issues. Uh, the, the others didn't make the cut, basically. There was, when we originally put the bond program together, it was $650 million.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the commissioners allowed us to put on the ballot 350, and so there had to be some really tough decisions around that other 300 million plus dollars. And unfortunately, it was one of the cuts.
It's unfortunate. Thanks again to the students. It really, your words matter. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I'd like to think that you all coming here would help influence, but I'm not so sure. I think some people have made up their minds. But I thank you for coming and participating in this process. Uh, you've probably read about it in your civics class or something, and now you get to see it in action. I'd just like to appeal to the board to make the right decision for kids, because that's who we are here for.
Thank you. Mr. Bohannon.
Daryl, I am so sorry to have you come back up here one more time. I was, I wanted to interject, but I was like, I, I-
He getting his steps in.
I needed to get my steps in anyway.
So I, I, I tend to approach my decision-making by looking at the history and sort of, kind of how we got here. Um, because I think that when you talk about the sort of history of facilities improvements at schools kind of writ large, the, the usage of bonds to provide for facility needs for school systems, is that something that's happened? When did that start to become common?
Uh, so the use of bonds in, in this district started in 2000, actually, you back up. There was a state bond in 1998 in which there were some matching funds that our district participated in, a state bond. Um, and then there was a voter-approved bond in this county, 2001, and 2006, and then again in 2016. It was the mechanism to fund, uh, building projects. It's, it's actually, basically, um, the county sells those bonds. Um, and so it's kind of the, it's kind of like buying a house, and then you mortgage it, and those, those bonds are over a 20-year period.
So, because I think there's been conversation about the state's responsibility with kind of helping school systems kind of keep up with their facilities. And I think we've moved to a place where that, for, for districts like ours that are more urban and have the tax base, that's something that we've been doing for quite some time, because the state has kind of divested a little bit of that responsibility and sort of shifted it to county commissioners. Would you, would you say that that kind of has been the, the, is that sort of the reality?
Well, the, the responsibility of the county commissioners is to maintain your facilities-
Okay.
-as, as a board. So they, they provide the mechanism to fund them, to build them, and their responsibility is to, to provide funding to maintain them, which is part of our 10-year capital plan that we talked about. And quite honestly, you got to remember, this is a district that's 19, mid, early 1960s. There was not a capital plan until 2010. So, um, you know, that, this, this, we're still new in this, and, and so kind of getting caught up on some things. But, um, they're, they realize that their responsibility is to provide maintenance. And, and some of that, that quite honestly, the state of North Carolina is not really their responsibility to do that, and it is your local commissioners.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Levy it, Daryl. Um, it, North Carolina is a little bit unique in the way that they do that as well, correct? A lot of other states, um, have a part of their tax base that is facilities for schools and things like that.
I mean, a lot of school districts have tax, they have authority to tax, as well as, I think it might be important with our, our group here today to understand the lottery dollars, because there's a lot of people that's probably going, well, why don't you use your lottery dollars towards this? And so a lot of districts in the state of North Carolina get lottery funds in, and they can be used for construction, such as what we're talking about today, or classrooms, or schools. Um, or actually hiring personnel in some cases in some districts. The agreement here, in order to, to lower the, to keep the tax rate lower to the citizens in Forsyth County, uh, back around the, between the 2001, 2006 bond, when the, when the lottery was passed, was that those funds would come to the district and go back to the county to pay down that mortgage debt, that bond debt. And that would keep the, the tax rate low to the citizens. And I think it's probably one of the reasons we've probably been successful in passing bond references, quite honestly. But, um, that, that money kind of flows through, goes back, pays your debt down over time.
Correct.
And that agreement's still in place.
And, and we also have a lower, um, what's it called? I can't think right now, but we're a four or something, we're as most, um, excuse me?
Yeah, it's a triple A bond.
Triple A bond, thank you. In most, most districts or most counties are what double, I mean, they don't have, yeah.
Yeah, we have excellent, an excellent credit.
Board Member Jones.
Uh, thank you, Chair Woodbury. So I think all of, I think all of my colleagues have expressed their, you know, thoughts, concerns, different things. Um, it's, it's definitely great to hear from the students. Um, you know, we have a motion on the table, and that's, you know, to, to put 2 million to, toward Reynolds, a million to, to Parkland. I, I hear, I'm, I, I am, I do not doubt that our superintendent and staff will, will work to, to, to fix these, these issues for, um, the schools that have been identified, um, in, in, in ways. I think, you know, for me, we, we really have to think about too, that, that this is a little different situation, I think, at Reynolds, because we have people who are putting out there that they will continue to work to raise money for something that we really should fully and wholly provide. And what they're asking for, and, and if the motion that's on the table gets voted down, you know, I would just ask us to consider, you know, a financial commitment to, to Reynolds for the fundraising piece of it. And, you know, that, that, they're, they're saying that if there is a, I think we, we did, we have a commitment with them. We have a current MOU, we've, we've updated things. But the one thing that, that since my time on the board has not happened, and that is to put funds toward the stadium so that they can then publicly go to people and say, the, the funds, they have put this much here, and this is the, the other amount that we need. And, you know, I, I think at times they have been, been almost penalized because they, they probably had a, you know, a, a very grandiose idea in the beginning that they could raise it all. And, and they've raised a lot, and, and they've done practice fields, and they've, they've done plans. And I don't, I'm not sure exactly what all that equates to, but I don't want to penalize them for doing that. It's, it's like a PTA or a booster club or anyone else who, who, who says, hey, we're going to go out and try to tackle this project. And, um, and the way I see that is that, that that's, if it's a $6 million project and we contribute something and they raise the rest, whatever that ends up being, that's four or five or six million dollars that can be spent on other projects. And we know the list is long. So I would just, you know, just ask the, the board right now to consider, if there, if there's anything, I mean, because I'm getting the idea that the motion on the floor is going to fail. Uh, but I think it's, it's coming from committee, and I think we need to vote it up or down. And then I'd just say, you know, is, is there anything at this time that we can give to, to the group so that they can go out and try to raise some dollars? And at the end of the day, it's a win for the district. It's a win for them because it, it moves along quicker. But it's a win for the district because we, um, you know, that, that's, that's extra dollars that we can put somewhere else. So, um, Chair Woodbury, I, I just think, before we get too far into this continuing back and forth, that we maybe just call the vote.
I, I agree. So if there are no further questions or discussion, all in favor of the current motion on the floor? Okay. All opposed? Okay. So the motion fails, Deion. I, I think that there, I think that there may be some, um, comment, or I, I guess the question I would have is there another, another motion that a board member would like to have us consider?
Well, Ms. McManus, I guess I have a question before I would, would make a motion, but, um, how, if, if you know, or maybe, maybe Mr. Walker knows, how much money we could safely commit to get, get the ball rolling? And, and, and there is a, I know that there are some plans that will expire. Um, and I think that it, it's important that we find places for these students to practice at Reynolds as close to on-site. Is there, uh, over a year period of time? I know we've got the 500,000, correct, Mr. Walker?
Yes, ma'am.
And so would we have other mechanisms or other ways to, to start something to make Parkland safe? To have a, to a start on the stadium, possibly a practice field where the stadium is, to just start with that process? Or, or whatever, um, I mean, I know I'm putting you on the spot, sorry, but, um-
And don't forget Prep.
Board, Board Member Parker, can I ask?
Yeah, I'm working on Prep.
Board Member Parker, before he, can I ask a quick question before he, Daryl answers?
Sure.
Because it's going to be about going from a practice field to then the stadium. Is that the normal, like, so is that, is that something that could be done? So can you, if you built a practice field first and, and did what you had to do to level it, can that then turn into a stadium? I don't know, I don't know anything about construction, so-
Yeah, in fact, that, I, I failed, um, the other night to mention, it just totally slipped my mind, I told the colon today, is that part of the plan when we finish up the Wiley project is to grade the area to make it some type of usable practice space, short-term, until there was a decision made about the stadium. If we're going to go that direction, my suggestion may be that we apply the half a million dollar funds toward maybe some part of that project at the end of Wiley, and go ahead and implement some, install some lights, and go ahead and make the surface, um, stadium-ready.
What about the, what about the storm retention system?
I say we go ahead and do, look at, look at.
Right.
I won't sit here and say, let's commit to it.
Right.
But I think we go ahead as a staff and engineer and program that to go ahead and get the, and, and work with our home field advantage where we can, and go ahead and prepare it so that what would be left would be your bleachers and your concession stand. And, um, now that puts Parkland on the sidelines for a little while, until we save other dollars. Um, but I think we, as a staff, are committed. I'm, I'm still, my goal would be to stick with the two million, one million, uh, option as we go down the road, as savings to apply back towards these projects. And, and I think, um, I think, I don't want to go too far into weeds, but I, I mean, I think what the community's looking for is, are we going to commit funds? And what, what resource that is, what source that is, is the question at hand, right? But I think we can move forward in doing something, uh, you call it a practice field, but I'm going to call it a really nice, really nice space, and-
It wouldn't be a stadium.
It, it-
Wouldn't be a stadium where, where spectators would come just yet, but-
Right, we, we could, we could go ahead and, and prepare that surface. Um, and, you know, I'm speaking with Colin back there behind me, behind my back, and, you know, without really having that conversation and talking with him. But, you know, part of that, part of that Wiley project includes grading that area in the end of the project. And maybe we just magnify that grading project. Just something for us now, I, I would need to bring that plan back to you. Um, but I think that we surely could commit part of that, those funds towards that and match it up with the Wiley project and, and start moving this forward.
And, and is also, as a part of that plan, um, could we, could we look at exactly how much? From just the discussion the other night, it seemed like Parkland really needed some fencing to make something safe. And other than that, it was upgrades. They could still use facilities, but, but they need, they need upgrades. Is there, is there, are there any other safety issues at Parkland?
Uh, we need to redo the surface there. The, the plane, the, the field surface there is not, I mean, we're going to, the, the plan will be to irrigate it, sprig it, make it a nice surface as well. The big issue there is they do want to run track there, there's no restroom facilities. So about, you know, to build the restrooms, um, it's probably going to be in the 400, 500,000 dollar range. And so that would probably be one of the first things out of, out of the chute when we do the Parkland project. Try to get a restroom facility, because in that way it can serve on campus for baseball, as well as track, as well as those kids that are there on campus for practice.
Do the, do they have temporary restrooms right now? Port-a-potties, I guess?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that would, that, so they have, they have that right now? Okay. So if I hear you, I, I have angst taking money out of, out of fund balance, I just really do. Um, so if I hear what you're saying, you, you think that we can, can go forth with the projects and find monies somehow, and then, and use it from our capital monies? Is that, is that what I hear you saying? Is that what I hear, Ms. McManus? Is that what I hear? If you can kind of, um-
Yeah, so, so we, we bid those projects occasionally throughout the year. Right now, we're working on 2020 through 2022, which is the funding we have from the county commissioners. Um, and so we have probably another six or eight million dollars of the projects to bid in that group. And so the question will become to what Kaplan asked me, is what, how much out of that do we think we can get in savings? And that's kind of the unknown, but I do think there will be some. And, um, and then we could just say to staff, we would recommend you setting savings. So why, my job would be, every time we bid a capital project, is to come back to this board and say, we bid this roof, we bid, we budgeted 500,000, it came in at 300,000. I'd like to set this 200,000 dollars in aside-
Aside for that.
-for these projects.
But we could go ahead and go forth with what we have right now and start with the, with the things that, that, the 500,000 to start with, the, the basics, because already a part of the Wiley project was to grade that area and do all that, that work in the storm retention.
Yeah, my recommendation would be to roll that 500,000 into that, into the Wiley project that Colin was working on, and prepare that surface for the future.
Okay.
I have a quick question, a quick statement, a very quick statement. And this is not for you.
Okay.
Um, I just have a statement about the private partnership that Dana has mentioned. Uh, I'm very concerned about that, and people forget that I am also an alumni of RJR, and so were my parents. The alumni base at RJR has far more wealth than alumni bases at Parkland and Prep. So I would encourage Home Field Advantage, because the MOU states that we cannot fund any money. They would 100% cover the money under 7A. So I would urge Home Field Advantage to embrace Parkland and Prep, as well to privately fundraise for them at the same time.
So I, thank, thank you, Board Member Brimber. I think that, um, Mr. Bohannon has, um, a motion for us to consider to move forward.
So, uh, before I do that, I just want to say kind of where it's coming from. Because I think I personally, because of the nature of kind of how these meetings happened, I, there's been a lot of kind of conjecture about what we possibly could do. And normally, the way we work is we're presented with options, and then we have an opportunity to either vote for or against those things. Because of just how these meetings happened, we really don't have, you know, we're asking Daryl to kind of guess, we're asking Andrea to kind of guess, and we really don't know definitively what it is that we have. So, um, I moved it, that this board instructor superintendent to meet with staff to develop a recommendation to address the funding of athletic facility improvements at Parkland, Winston-Salem Prep, and Reynolds. And this would include estimates of cost, as well as where we're going to pull the money from. Um, and that needs to be presented to the board at our first Building and Grounds Committee in August. And that include, that would include the 500,000 we have in savings.
I would second that.
Any further question or discussion?
So I just have a clarification. Um, and so I, I, would, would anyone consider putting in that motion, um, anything, um, any, any funds at this time that, uh, that, you know, would show just a good faith to the community and those who are trying to raise the funds? That we, you know, I understand that, that, that motion in itself is good faith that we're moving forward. I, I, I understand- I, I understand that, but if, if, if they feel that their donor base, which this group has, Ms. Brimmer just said, they, they've got all the resources, so I doubt that they couldn't raise the money. So can we, can we, can we give something to show that good faith effort so that they can go out and raise the rest of the money, and be ready to put this stadium in place for their students as soon as possible? Would, would anyone consider that in a motion? I'm just putting that out there.
If I heard what Mr. Walker was saying, he was saying that that, and, and I'm, and we need to put that in the motion, I think. He was saying that we would, and Mr. Bohannon, I think, said that, but not as, maybe specifically, as we probably need to say it, but that any monies and savings that we did occur during the time would go toward these athletic facility projects? Is that what you were kind of saying, Mr. Bohannon?
Right, so the, the motion I wanted to leave, I wanted to leave a little general so that Daryl and Tricia can, and Andrea can get together to say, okay, if we want to take that, some of that 500,000 from savings and utilize that to grade Reynolds, because we feel like that's the priority right now, then that's what they can recommend to us to do. But I, I, I think, you know, I would be more than happy to, to hear potential options about if, if there were, if, if board members had a certain amount that they wanted to go ahead to name, to commit to a certain project. I mean, I'd be more than willing to hear that, and potentially demand it as friendly.
So I, I just, I, I understand, I think that's going toward, that's going toward, you know, construction, or, or, or we're finishing off a project, I think, from what I understand from Mr. Walker saying, that to grade that area and, and, and clean that up is kind of actually still attached to the Wiley project? Is that right? Because it's, that's where they're staging everything, so that needs to, that needs to happen regardless. I guess I'm asking that the, the board, is, is anyone just comfortable with taking, with, with just identifying that as a school district, we, we would pledge a dollar amount to go to the construction of the stadium above that? I, I mean, the, grading this is, is, and I, that's all I'm, you know, maybe you're not, and maybe what you're trying to, to say is that the money to do this is the, our contribution. But I'm, I'm just asking if there is, is, if you're comfortable with a dollar amount that would... Hold on, Elizabeth, just let me finish. If there is a dollar amount that we would put forward so that when they are fundraising to build a, a, a facility for a public school, and there's private dollars going to do that, they could at least say that this public entity has given, you know, has pledged, in a sense, in good faith, X amount of dollars? So I, I think that, that's what I'm hearing, that, that would maybe bring this thing together and put some closure there. So I'm just, last, I'll, I'll be quiet, but just last ask, is there any dollars that we can put out there? Commit?
As a pledge?
So...
As a pledge?
Right.
Yeah, and again, what I think I'm hearing is that there's a motion and a second on the floor, and there, and it's a discussion, but I think we vote on the motion on the floor as it was presented and seconded.
Yeah, I was just asking that they would...
I was, yeah, that, that, that's where we are, Elizabeth. I think she was just asked, so we would, if we considered what she was saying, then we would have to vote on this first, and then another motion?
I was actually asking if they would, if they were, I was actually asking my colleague, Mr. Bohannon, if he would maybe consider amending his motion to include that. But if not, that's fine, we can vote on what's on the table and put this second.
So I won't amend the motion, but I do, other than to say that a part of the presentation that we would get in, at the Buildings and Grounds Committee in August, is from staff, what they believe we need to commit to the project. So in, at that Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting, Tricia and Daryl would, would tell us how much money you believe that we can commit to the project. Thank you.
And then, and at that point, we would make that, we would, we would decide on that amount? Okay, I can live with that.
If there are no further question or discussion on this motion on the table now, all in favor? All right, all, any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
So can, can I make another motion?
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay, so I think my, my ask for, for a monetary pledge and contribution was not put in that motion, so I'll make another motion that we, that we take a million dollars out of fund balance, and pledge that, or, or pledge a million dollars out of our fund balance to the Reynolds, to the Reynolds Stadium. And I, I, I really feel that that will, again, it's a $6 million project, but this board's never really gone, gone on record to, to give any monetary, you know, real money to commit to that. I don't, I don't know if that would make a difference, but we're still saying that we are, until we can come up with the funds to pay for it all, we're still banking on private citizens working. It's a public-private partnership. And we, we have those, they, they work well, but we, you know, in doing that, you've got to make, the, the, the public part has to have some commitment. So I'm just asking, and make a motion that we would, you know, that we consider to move, or make a pledge of a million dollars of our funds to go toward the construction of the $6 million stadium.
Ms. Jones, would you be willing to word that such that either through the savings that, that Mr. Walker or the, the system might find to go toward that million, or that, that it wouldn't necessarily all have to come out of fund balance if there was other savings that came up within the year?
I mean, if there, if there are other savings and other ways to do it, I, I guess I would just say, we would pledge a million dollars, and we, we, we could rely on our staff to tell us how to fund that million-dollar pledge. I could do that.
Okay, and so that, Mr. Bohannon, does that fit into your plan? If staff came with money that we could do, then that it wouldn't, that we would take that out and, and be a part of that pledge, correct?
We have, but Dana has, and that's a new one. There's a new, there's a new one.
Sorry, point of order, Madam Chair.
So I, I think that we need a, a second, and I was trying to get to, I think, in my mind, Marilyn was trying to get clarification before she made a second to the motion. So what I would ask now is if there is a second to the motion based on any clarity around that, Board Member Parker, or you were just, just asking for clarity before you attempted to do one?
I, I was asking for clarity, and I just guess now I need to have that motion restated, because I do think what you said, your motion said fund balance, and I, if we, it would be my preference if the money could be found, because I think it's, as, as we know, projects go, that things take time, and savings will come about, that we might not have to use the total million out of fund balance. Can, can you reword your, your motion so that we can have a little more levity there on where the funds come from?
So I, I will, I will make the motion this way, that, that today, this Board of Education commits a million dollars toward the construction of the RJ Reynolds Stadium. And that we will, how that money is, is acquired, we will leave to our staff, whether it's through savings or fund balance, for them to identify how that million comes.
Can I ask a question?
For clarity on the motion?
For clarity on the motion.
Okay.
Is that in addition to the money the district would put forward towards preparing, using a practice field, and perhaps a retention pond?
Yes ma'am, that was the intention of my motion.
So that would be in addition?
Yes ma'am.
After we've done the practice field and retention ponds and lights?
After the 500,000, correct? Because that's all, because a lot of that's already in Wiley, I think, some of that.
Yeah, so it'd be in addition to, on top of that?
Yes. That's my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
I thought I said, that's fine.
Oh, sorry, I didn't mean to go on.
Any further question or discussion? So the, I guess the only, the, the only question I have is relates to moving forward like this, or concern as a board member is, I think the commitment from this board of a million dollars without talking to staff is problematic to me, and I, I know that, you know, we're driving the ship, because we're the board, but, you know, in all due fairness to our staff, I, I do support theoretically what Board Member Jones is trying to get at, but until I get some direction from staff around that number of that million-dollar commitment, you know, I, I definitely have, you know, reservations of pledges, something like that.
The staff had originally made a recommendation for 3 million for Reynolds and 1 million for Parkland, so this is lower than what their recommendation was at Buildings and Grounds.
No, so, the staff, I think, did not make that recommendation. This board decided to suggest that is what we should do. I think that the CFO was clear around even waiting until her books were closed, and waiting on the state to help her figure out, you know, what to recommend to us. So I, I see where, you know, I, I understand your point, and I, you know, respect, you know, your perspective, but again, my reservation until staff can kind of give, you know, some direction, I would ask the, the board to consider a, a commitment that's based on the superintendent and staff bringing something up as this is what we should, would suggest you all make as a real commitment. But, you know, I, you know, support the premise on its, you know, foundation of, we got to send some kind of message to the community around how we're going to move forward with the support of building the stadium. But that's, that's just my two cents about it. Any other question or comment about the motion that has been seconded? Yes?
I have a quick question. So the, if it were a million-dollar commitment, would we, because we'll, we can bring back again, as was already approved, August 6th, about all three schools and where we're going to, is a million-dollar commitment mean, as we're planning, that we would need it all, like, right now up front? Or is it that we are committing, and then we actually, because the savings, again, as we bid new projects, Daryl just said we could get more, and so these are the things we're going to be talking about? Would the commitment just be, we're going to commit to that? We may not have it all, like, in one month from now, but we might in three or four months? I mean, I guess that's my question.
And that's what I would ask the, the staff to come back and say, we could, could, over two years, over one year, over six months? And so how can, you, you know, anyone say that?
Yeah, well, if we're doing it that way, could we commit to, could you amend it? We could commit to three? If we're doing it just that we're committing it?
I don't think so.
Over a certain period of time, but at least it, it sends a message?
Well, I'm, I'm, I, again, my, you know, the two, this is, this is my second term on the board. You know, I never, this, this never, it's gotten farther this time. It never, it never even made it to this discussion during my first term. So, you know, I just, we, guys, I just feel like we need to, I, I think the motion's pretty clear. We're, we're committing a million dollars to the construction of the stadium. That gives, you know, I don't know if you've ever been on, in a nonprofit or anything, when you're going out and you're trying to raise money, you know, most people want to know what the organization themselves has put toward it. It's, it's kind of common things. I mean, we, we were asking people to go to battle for us, to raise money for us, to build something with pub, private dollars in a public school. And yet, we are the entity, we are the district, and we've never made a public, raised our hand in public commitment or pledge of any dollars toward it. And I understand that it's our land, I understand the other motion around, you know, making investment. And that, that's great, but we, you know, if, if we're asking people to go out there and do that, you know, I think, I think we could at least pledge a million dollars. And, and I think the motion is clear that we're not identifying how it's going to be paid for, that we're saying we're, we're leaving that to our CFO or superintendent as to how that happens. And that, that's the, I think that's the motion in a second, and I hope we call, call the vote.
We, we are getting ready to.
I have one quick question.
And even though I, what I would ask then is if, if we're going to say, and not that I, you know, agree, but I think what is fair is if you're going to say, we pledge a million dollars to build a stadium at Reynolds, we pledge a million dollars to build a stadium at Parkland? I know one can't go to Winston-Salem Prep, but then I think the issue becomes, the community at Parkland doesn't have the Home Field Advantage operation to say, we're going to give money to help build it? So there goes the advantage that one group has over the other. And I think we should consider fair is fair with that scenario. And, and I, and I think I would have full consideration over that versus just one.
So you want to give a million, you want, you want to, for us to pledge?
I don't want to do anything, I, I, I'm just saying that I think it's fair, yes.
That, that, and that would be a million dollars for a stadium for Parkland, or a million dollars to do their improvements there? Because I'm trying to...
I think ultimately, Parkland wants a stadium, too.
Well, I think, but I think that the superintendent was saying that we're not sure if they can build it on campus. So I'm try, I'm just, and maybe we can take that up in a separate motion. I, I would just like for us to put what's on the table, I'm not going to amend the motion.
Okay.
I just have a quick question for Deion. With the MOU, does that violate the MOU, and it'll have to be amended?
Yes, well, I mean, the, the MOU currently says that the, the Home Field Advantage has to raise all of the funds for the construction at this time, so yes, it would have to be amended.
So that amendment, so that motion needs to include the amendment to the MOU?
Do I need to move, put that, or can we take separate, do that later?
That doesn't have to be done via a motion. That can just be done as a result of whatever motion that passes.
But, yeah, doesn't that need to be through policy, though, Deion, to amend an MOU?
It doesn't have to be done, no, it doesn't have to be done through policy, to, through a policy committee? Is that what you're asking, through policy committee?
Yes.
It doesn't have to, I mean, it's a contract, and so what I'll do is, based on the, based on the action of the board, I'll prepare an amended MOU and bring it back to the board.
Okay.
So we'll go ahead and call the vote, all in favor of the motion that has been seconded? All opposed?
Because it's four, four, the motion fails.
Okay. So at this time, we have come to the end of our meeting, and I hope that you all have the rest of a good day. And this is officially our kickoff to the summer to take a break. So we hope that you all have definitely a safe and happy and fulfilling summer. We thank again the students for participating today, and our community. And I'll go ahead and ask for a motion to adjourn.
Are we going in, we're not going to close?
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, we got to go into closed.
I make a motion to go into closed.
There are no further question or discussion, let it be known by aye?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you for joining us on your school channel, Cable 2.